Yeah, I'd like to acknowledge General Getty. Mike, thanks for your service. Thanks for being here again. You're becoming a regular.
We normally have the invocation right now. I don't see Chaplain Gary Sheldon unless he's out there and I just don't. Oh, there you are. Thanks. We'll have the invocation followed by the Pledge of Allegiance from Councilman Lozelle.
Dearest Lord, gracious Savior, we're thankful for this time of year when we can reflect on your appearance upon this earth 2,000 years ago, plus or minus wherein you consented to become a living Savior for those of us who would repent of our sins and come under your precious blood. It was your love that held you to that cross, not nails, but your love for us. I pray for your Holy Spirit to fill each member of this council that would call you by your name as their Savior. And I pray that your Holy Spirit would lead this council in ways that would glorify you. And I ask your protection upon the police department, and I thank you for what looks like might be an awesome vehicle for this police department. Politically incorrect though it may be, it looks real correct to me. In Jesus' name, amen.
Ladies and gentlemen, do you want me to pledge allegiance?
The flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Clerk, go ahead and take the roll, please.
Mayor Olberg.
Here.
Mayor Protam Lamerson.
Here.
Councilman Blair.
Here.
Councilwoman Or.
Here.
Councilman Shiska.
Here.
And Councilwoman Wilcox.
Here.
All present.
Okay, thank you. City Manager, do we have any announcements?
Mayor, I have no city announcements for today.
Thank you. We'll go to our first item.
The Consent Agenda. Consent Agenda, Item 1A, approval of minutes for the city council meetings held on November 24, 2015, and December 1, 2015. Mayor and Council, I would, I do want to point out a couple corrections that I have to the minutes. For the November 24 regular voting meeting, on page five, under item E, it states that Mayor Kirkendall returned to the dais at 3:31 PM. It should say Mayor Kirkendall returned to the dais at 3:51 PM. So we'll make that change. And then for the November 24, 2015 installation of new officers in voting meeting, on page two, the first paragraph, the last sentence, the word "he" should be changed to "her." So it was a typo we made on that. Item B, approval of water service agreement number 14-007, city contract number 2016-009 with S.J. Homes LLC for the construction of two duplexes, 340 Robinson Drive, APN 11-05-002E. Item C, approval of water service agreement number 15-015, city contract number 2016-090 with Eureka Apartments LLC for the remodel of an extended stay home into an apartment complex, 1141 East Gurley Street, APN 114-06-084A. Item D, approval of water service agreement number 15-006, city contract number 2016-022 with the Jason Orpheus 2014 Trust and Colleen Johnson 2010 Trust for the remodel of a boarding home into an apartment complex, 223 East Willow Street, APN 113-167. Item E, approval of a one-year contract with Fitness Appraisal LLC for comprehensive wellness fitness testing of firefighters in an estimated amount of $17,400, city contract number 2016-091. Item F, ratification of payment for emergency purchase of one each heavy-duty equipment trailer from Titan Machinery in the amount of $19,121.89 in water fund. Item D, adoption of ordinance 4961-1499, an ordinance of the mayor and council of the city of Prescott, Yavapai County, Arizona, authorizing the purchase and acceptance of public utility easements from the Hadley Family Revital Trust and from Ben A. Wagner and Karen M. Wagner for the Smoke Tree Lane Reconstruction Project, and authorizing the mayor's staff to execute any and all documents to effectuate said purchases and acceptances. Item H, adoption of ordinance 4960-1498, an ordinance of the mayor and council of the city of Prescott, Yavapai County, Arizona, authorizing the acceptance of real properties gifted to the city from the Harold James Family Trust and from DW One Investments LLC for the Willow Creek Road Realignment Project, and authorizing the mayor and staff to execute any and all documents to effectuate said acceptance. Item I, approval to accept and acquire an International Navistar MAX Pro Mine Resistant Ambush Protected Tactical Rescue Vehicle from the Law Enforcement Support Office of the Defense Logistics Agency through the National Defense Authorization Act of 1997 for use by the, for use by the police department. And Item J, approval to accept a grant award from the Arizona Department of Public Safety Victims of Crime Act of $101,571 for a one-year victim advocate position and related equipment and training.
Good. Thank you. I've had input from the council. They would like to pull C, item 1C, 1D, 1I, and 1J from consideration right now. So I would like to get a motion if I could for the consent agenda minus those items.
Mayor, I move to approve Consent Agenda A, B, E, F, G, and H. Is that correct?
Second.
Do I have a second?
You have a second.
Do you have a motion and a second? Please vote.
Passes unanimously.
Okay, on the items C and D, Councilman Lamerson?
Thank you. Yeah. I would like to have these pulled for a reason, and that reason is I don't think they've been fully vetted through the process of building approval. I think that before we issue water out of the alternative water portfolio and extension beyond what was there to begin with, grandfathered with Assured Water Portfolio, that all the Is need to be dotted and the Ts need to be crossed. And I don't think we're quite there yet. And I think I had opportunity to discuss this issue with Mr. Geis. I think we had opportunity to discuss this issue with our water management. And from that perspective, I don't think this is ready to be voted on today.
Okay, I've had discussion with the city manager, and he, in case the applicant is agreeable to remove item 1C from the agenda to be brought back in January. Would that be sufficient for you for D also?
It would be sufficient if the applicant would be willing to do that. I would like to see that D come back at a later date for a fully vetted public discussion as to what we're actually doing, especially right there at the gateway of the city of Prescott.
Okay. Do we have to make a motion to move this to a later date?
Just a comment before answering that question. Mayor Protam, would you like to see both of these items come to the Water Issues Committee first?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Then with that clarification, Mayor, it's my understanding that the applicant has requested removal of item C from the agenda, so there's no need for any council action on that one. I don't know if the applicant on D has requested removal. So that one, the council probably should move to continue that item until, well, until I suppose the Water Issues Committee has a chance to take a cut at it, and then subsequent, or after that, we can go to the, come back to the council.
So we don't have a motion on that?
You would have, you would do a motion on that one since the applicant hasn't requested its removal.
Do I have a motion on D?
I would make that motion to defer item D until a later date, and Water Issues has had a opportunity to fully understand what we're being asked to recommend to this council body as a whole.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion and a second. Please vote. Okay, next item is 1I. Any discussion?
Thank you, Mayor. This is an item that came up at our last council meeting in which I expressed some concerns about equipping our police department with a military tactical vehicle because it sends the wrong message about what our community is. I certainly don't ever want our officers to be in danger. But I think that we would be better off equipping our officers with personal protective equipment, training them in tactics and SWAT team responses. And I think about what happened in San Bernardino where one officer went into a building and made sure it was secure and got the people out. He didn't go in there with an armored vehicle. They went looking for the suspects in an armored vehicle, but the response initially didn't require one. And I'm just, I'm just very concerned about what Prescott would become if we continue to have these kind of military vehicles in our police force.
I think if, if I heard, Mayor, if I could, please.
Go ahead.
If I heard right from the lieutenant that that vehicle wouldn't be deployed unless there were scrutiny by not only the city manager, but by the chief of police and possibly the city council, I would defer to go back to several years ago when we had two officers, Ricky Klosbach and Tim Fletcher, that were pinned in a gun battle with their own protective gear on, and they were pinned and could not get out. This vehicle at that time would have been a great vehicle to do interface between the shooter and our police officers to get them out of harm's way. So unlike Gene, I think of it as a different mind thought, and I don't think it's militarizing the city of Prescott. I just look at it as another tool.
Mayor, if I may comment. To, to speak to a balance of what Councilwoman Wilcox brings to the table, if I could just offer a couple of thoughts. One is the militarization of the police force by the use of this equipment really is kind of, it's been in the media recently, so I understand why it would be viewed in that light by some. But because of misuse of military equipment by law enforcement agencies around the country, the Obama administration a number of years ago did a complete review of these programs, and certain items were pulled from law enforcement use because of additional scrutiny by the administration into how law enforcement agencies around the country were using them. This particular vehicle was not pulled. The Obama administration, the federal program that oversees these military to law enforcement surplus equipment, they saw the value in a civilian application of this particular vehicle. In addition to what we saw in San Bernardino, I would point to Colorado Springs. The MRAP, the very vehicle that we're asking for, was used to rescue three people who were in the line of fire for a number of hours without danger to individuals involved. So in one sense, there is a civilian application in a world that is uncertain. And what I would ask Mayor and Council to consider is that while we enjoy a wonderful quality of life here with a community of quality people, and the likelihood of an incident occurring here isn't, isn't as realistic as in some, the idea that it can never happen here, I think, would be short-sighted. We don't, your, your police department has been very good with their discretion in how they've displayed the military vehicles that we've had for a number of years. And we would continue to do that with this vehicle if this council would authorize us to, to have this. It would be available for those circumstances that warrant a rescue, or in the event in San Bernardino, it was in fact two armored vehicles that surrounded the terrorist vehicle because of the explosive devices that may have been in it and the weaponry that they brought to the table within a city in our, in our country. So I would just ask to consider that these programs have been reviewed at the highest level. The Obama administration clearly sees a use for civilian law enforcement on some pieces of military equipment, and your police department has shown good discretion in the past when we've had these, these type of vehicles. And one other thing to add, how things have changed for law enforcement. When I got into the business, we were issued a shotgun and a revolver. And we had a shotgun because you would shoot birdshot, and it wouldn't penetrate anything. It simply would scatter. In those days, officers weren't facing individuals with assault rifles. An assault rifle will penetrate a personal protective vest. The vests protect us from handguns, not assault rifles. And what we have seen time and time again in our nation, these terrorists or other individuals that become mentally unstable, they're using weaponry that will clearly penetrate a, a personal vest. So we've got to have something to even that score when it comes to that point. Thank you, Mayor.
Billy?
Yes, I just want to say I fully support this measure. And Chief, I appreciate the word that you used, which was balanced. And, and I think that we need to use all of the equipment that we can to protect our officers and protect our citizens and not worry about what people might be looking at or thinking about that we're doing. We do the right thing. And, and I guess I would trust that our officers and your leadership would do just that.
Thank you. Councilman Jessica?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Chief, impression is everything, almost. And you're not going to be parading this vehicle around on the streets, right?
That has not been done, to my knowledge, in Prescott, and it's not our intent to parade this vehicle.
Okay, thank you. And I understand in conversations I've had with various people that you actually do store a lot of equipment that you would need in a, in a situation right there in the vehicle, right?
Yes, sir. Councilmember, that vehicle can transport equipment. More importantly, it could transport a large number of tactical officers to an event.
Okay, thank you. Thanks, Mr. Mayor. Do I have any public comment? Come forward.
My name is Daniel Matz, and I live over on Merritt Street. You know, if you find yourself in a situation where you need a vehicle like this, it's too late to go looking for one. I'd much rather have this thing, which by the way, we're getting for free, sitting in the police department's yard, ready to be used if needed. And if it's never used, that's okay. But if we need it, we'd better have that thing readily available. And these days, we have maniacs out there with weaponry. We should have this. We really should. And if I'm some idiot thinking of going and pulling mischief, I'm going to think twice about doing it in a city that has an MRAP.
Thanks, Dan. Anybody else?
Hi, my name is Sandra Smith, 701 White Spar. I have to agree with Dan. You don't need it till you need it. But when you need it, then you better have it. Like the chief said, a shotgun will go through your armor. An assault rifle will go through your armor. So will a bomb. And they're using a lot of that with their terrorist activities as well. But that MRAP will protect you from a bomb. So I'd rather see the officers come home alive and worry about what the other people think about the MRAP.
Thank you. Anybody else?
First of all, Prescott, Mayor, City Council, instead of acquiring all this military equipment to protect law enforcement, our local police from being outgunned by criminals with military weaponry, why don't we take this military weaponry off the streets, out of our stores, out of our gun stores, and especially out of gun shows like this weekend? So just coincidentally, it was three years ago today, December 15, 2013, that, or 12, that Daily Courier had an article, an editorial supporting some kind of sensible gun control legislation at the local level. And I know all about state preemption, but I hope this lobbyist that you're hiring to go down to Phoenix will spend some time trying to change these preemption laws, and especially the one preventing you from taking some kind of local action to implement some sensible gun laws in our community. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. I'll take one more comment, and then we'll move on.
Good afternoon. My name's Ralph Hess. I live in Prescott. I appreciate the opportunity to speak on this issue. I wasn't here in November when you voted on it previously, but I think you got, received an email that I had sent. Here's my concern. I am concerned about the impression that it gives, but that's not my primary concern. And that's what I've heard people address. Because impressions are important, but safety and issues of substance are even more important. Let me talk about a couple of things. I heard what the chief said today. And Chief Manahan, and he, Manahan, and he also made a similar comment in an article in the Courier that was, I think, at least a year ago, in which he made a similar comment, that it's good to have this equipment for the instance when you might have a Colorado Springs event, or you might have a Columbine event. The concern I have, though, is, in looking at the minutes, since I wasn't here in November when you addressed this before, in the minutes, it said that these vehicles were used six to 15 times, I think, last year. And I know we haven't had six to 15 Colorado Springs, and we haven't had six to 15 Columbines. So my concern is, and I don't have the data on what we've been using it for, but across the country, we have reports that they're being used routinely by SWAT teams when they're exercising search warrants. And that's very dangerous. That escalates tension, escalates violence as opposed to diminishing it, which really is what I think we want our police force to do. This equipment, I'm not just concerned about this MRAP. I'm concerned about the issuance, and there's a whole list, which I no longer have, but I, I was provided by the police department, a whole list of military equipment that the city of Prescott has received. Now, this equipment is used for warfare, to kill who our government tells us are, are enemies. And it's being brought in to be used by the police department in protecting and serving citizens of our city. What concerns me is when you have, and I'm, I'm not a psychologist, but once you have police officers who are using equipment designed to kill people, to protect and serve, I'm concerned about an escalation of aggressiveness. Now, those are my concerns, even a larger, specifically with regard to this equipment. What's a larger concern for me, or not larger, but broader, in my email I sent to you, or a couple of you, and I asked that to be disseminated, Senator McCain was here several, I don't know when it was, but when this discussion was, when this issue was reaching controversy nationwide, people were concerned about it, probably led, might have been before the Obama administration modified the 1033 program. And what, what Senator McCain said was he was going to contact local officials in order to see what their feelings were, their, their input was with regard to this program. I, I asked Senator McCain to also include the population, not just the elected officials. And his response was, well, I'm sure the elected officials are going to take input from the public. Well, we haven't had that input. And this, these types of meetings, this meeting here where you hear about half a dozen of us, is not adequate to decide whether we want to have a policy of providing military equipment to our police where nationally it's leading to a diminishment of civil rights, it's leading to aggressiveness in the, in policing policies. As contrary to what we're hearing is the policy of having community-based policing. So what I would really like to have done with this is to postpone this decision until we have that public input and have enough time so that we can have the conversation with our police department. We can have the conversation with all of the members of the community who are going to be affected by this. And that's why I'm asking, that's why I'm opposed to it at this time. And once we have those kind of discussions, we can all make educated decisions, not just rely on, this is used to, to protect people. Well, let's, let's talk about specifics. And let's have a public hearing where everyone in the community can participate in it.
Hey, thanks, Ralph. Chief, do you want to make any comments, or?
Thank you, Mayor. In closing, the most recent incident that we experienced here in Yavapai County occurred in Ash Fork. The presence of armored vehicles at the scene, and this was a family who had a 50-caliber machine gun set up in a bunker. They had made threats to kill law enforcement. They had shot a deputy earlier that day. The presence of the armored vehicle and the tactical teams there sent a message to that family to surrender. I would argue that the psychological impact is one of closing a deal, not escalating a deal. We have to win those encounters. And the reality is, there are people right here in Yavapai County who have firepower that can shred a police car. We have to be able to respond to that when the need is there. Your police department has shown good discretion in how they've used these, the weapons we've obtained from the 1033 program. And my commitment to this mayor and council and to the citizens of this community is we would continue to use very good discretion in the application of this equipment, should you approve it.
Okay. Thanks, Chief. If I don't have any further discussion from the council, do I have a motion?
Mayor, I move to approve and accept and acquire an International Navistar MAX Pro Mine Resistant Ambush Protected Tactical Rescue Vehicle from Law Enforcement Support Office of Defense Logistics Agency through the National Defense Authorization Act of 1997 for use for the police department.
Second.
Do I have a motion and a second? Please vote.
Oh, I thought you passed.
Passes 6 to 1. Councilwoman Wilcox, dissenting.
Thank you. 1J, do I have any discussion?
I had a question on 1J. A couple questions I'd have. Chief, I know that you support this, and it's been one of these things that we brought up to actually look for these types of awards, and we were given that opportunity. I'd ask two questions. Number one, if the, if the program goes away next year, does the position go away, number one? Number two, when that person is hired, are they automatically put into PSPRS for their retirement?
Mayor Olberg, Councilmember Blair, a couple things. One would be, this is a civilian position, and they would not be entering PSPR. They'd be in the Arizona State Retirement System. And the position is going to be advertised and solicited with the one-year position so that applicants know that it, there may be an opportunity that it's not extended. We have every reason to believe that it'll ultimately play out to a three-year position. The funds available under VOKA right now are substantial. And even though it, it's approved for one year, we know that we can apply for the extensions. We have every reason to believe at this time we'll be granted those. It's guaranteed one year. It'll be advertised that way, and it does not affect the PSPRS system.
Thank you, Chief.
Do I have any further discussion?
I had a, I was with conjunction with Councilman Blair. I just wanted to make sure, and I appreciate your affirming that it's renewable. It's not a guarantee. That's number one. And number two, that it's civilian. It's not police. And that it doesn't obligate this city to put somebody else in a broken system for retirement, of which right now we have the option of either hiring or not hiring people to go into a broken system. So I do like the idea that it's not.
Any further discussion? Any from the public? Do I have a motion?
Mayor, move to approve Consent Agenda, or I'm sorry, move to approve the Arizona Department of Public Safety Victims of Crime Act of $101,571 for a one-year victim advocate position and related equipment and training.
Second.
Do I have a motion and a second? Please vote.
Passes, passes unanimously.
Okay, let's move on to the regular agenda. Item 2A.
Item 2A, public hearing in consideration of a new liquor license application for a Series 10 beer and wine star license from Linda Gale Novak, applicant for Davino located at 109 Grove Avenue. Mayor and Council, Ms. Novak has requested a new license for a Series 10 beer and wine star license. store license. The police department has reviewed the application and found it to be in compliance with state law. The community development department has reviewed the application and found it to be in compliance with zoning requirements and building safety issue. The applicant, the application and license fees have been paid, the application has been posted at the proposed location for the required 20 days, and no public comments have been received. And I believe the applicant is in attendance.
Linda, why don't you go ahead and step forward and tell us about it?
My name is Linda Novak. My daughter, Amy Novak, owns Solye Back Alley Bistro, and we currently have a beer and wine permit. We are seeking to get our beer and wine Series 10 license so that we may offer our customers to come in and don't bring a bottle of wine or the allotted amount of beer, they could purchase it for their enjoyment there. We would only be open the hours that our restaurant is open, and so it's basically just a convenience for our customers.
Okay. Any comments from the council?
We got great food.
Thank you.
Thank you, Linda.
You're welcome.
Do I have a motion to close the public hearing?
Mayor, I move to close the public hearing.
Second.
Both, please.
Passes unanimously.
Do I have a motion to approve?
Mayor, I move to approve liquor license application number 10133298 for a Series 10 beer and wine store license for Dovino located at 109 Grove Avenue.
Second. Do I have a motion, a second, please vote?
Passes unanimously.
You got it, Linda. Okay, we'll move to 2B.
Item 2B, approval of a water fee settlement agreement with Yavapai Prescott Indian Tribe.
I think that's ours, along with Public Works, Mayor and council. I'm going to turn over the podium to Assistant City Attorney Matt Pedraki, who sort of did much of the yeoman's work on this, and let him kind of briefly explain the settlement, or the proposed settlement, and where, you know, where it sort of originated from, and make it from there.
Thank you, Mayor and council, Mr. Manager, Mr. Attorney, Madam Clark. Before you today is a proposed water settlement, water fee settlement agreement between the city of Prescott and the Yavapai Prescott Indian Tribes. The history on this particular settlement agreement goes back to 1994, and I sometimes wonder if the public knows how deep the reach of local government goes. This time, it went all the way to the top, to the United States Federal Congress. In 1994, an act of Congress was passed called the Yavapai Prescott Indian Tribe Water Rights Settlement Act. And what that act did was settle some outstanding litigation that was going on throughout the states, that involved various tribes, one of which was the Yavapai Prescott Indian Tribe. The settlement act is very wide in its scope and application. It's perpetual in nature. The city and the tribe, along with the CVIDD and the town of Chino Valley in the state of Arizona, gave up certain rights to the Central Arizona Project water rights that it had. And as part of the settlement act in 1994, the federal--
Matthew, would you please refresh the council on what Central Arizona Project is?
The CAP program is that very large canal that runs through the state and provides Arizona and much of Southern California with its, with its water, most of which comes out of the Colorado River. Very valuable asset that we gave up our rights to. By giving up our rights to it under the 1994 Act, we were given a large amount of money, which was escrowed to go out and find some alternate water. The settlement act requires the continued on reservation use of water, use for water for municipal and industrial recreational agricultural purposes, which will be provided for, that is a quote right out of it. And essentially, the act requires water and effluent services from Prescott to YPIT. The significance of the scope of this act is that the city of Prescott is basically going to provide unlimited water to the tribe. Two separate agreements came out of the federal legislation. The one we're talking about today is something called a water service agreement between the city and the tribe. YPIT has really been paying under protest since 1994 various fees that are spelled out in the water service agreement. The argument from the tribes is we've been improperly assessing certain fees for years. YPIT did file a notice of breach against the city in 2013, and instead of going to federal arbitration, which is contemplated in the water service agreement, we decided to sit down with the tribe and see if we can resolve the issues. And that's why we're here today. The tribe and the city entered a tolling agreement to stop the litigation. And we've been meeting for a number of years with the tribe at a staff level, basically talking about three, three separate issues. One is resolving these disputed fees paid by the tribe, one is to resolve some flow pressure issues up to the tribal resort, and another is acquiring easements. Today, we're talking about the first issue, that is, how do we settle the dispute of fees? And that is the agreement that you have before you. In the near future, we'll be talking about those other two issues, they'll be coming most likely to you through the form of some sort of capital improvement project approvals that you'll make, and the city will acquire needed easements and assist in getting those flow pressures for fire protection up to where they need to be pursuant to the agreement. In essence, the city has charged for alternative water charges, a city tax on reservation users, streetlight fees, water development fees, water system impact fees, sewer system impact fees against the tribe. And, you know, we spent a number of years kind of looking at this thing, and the determination was made that it would be in the city's best interest to try to settle these, these accounts. The total settlement agreement, that is the check that you'll write to the tribe in an effort to settle the overcharges, will be $336,182.55. In addition, the city will escrow $163,636.67 to reimburse non-tribal accounts, and the city will attempt to find out which non-tribal accounts pay that and kind of shore up those overpayments by the non-tribal account holders. We've talked about this in executive session a few times. Today, we're here for the, the actual approval of the water fee settlement, if that's something you're interested in doing. I'll be happy to entertain any questions from the council.
Mayor, I would just have one, one point to add to this, is that those figures were book, you know, bookkeeping and accounted figures, only going back 10 years of the actual dollars that the city collected. So even though this has been in dispute for 20, something like that, whatever, whatever the math, 21 years since 1994, we're only going back to 2005 roughly. And it is, again, the net amount the city's actually collected, there's no interest, there's no penalty, so it simply amounts that the, those, those funds, remember, it's not general fund money, it's, it's essentially the water enterprise fund. That money's been collected, it was ultimately, if the council approves this, it'll be agreed that the city shouldn't have charged those fees, and they're simply reimbursing back. So there's no extra cost or charge to the city other than what we, what the city collected during the last 10 years and not going back the 10 or more before that.
It's important to recognize that we've been escrowing the funds as well, so we've got the money available to pay. And I'll let the manager indicate that the, the account that we'll be paying for that is something other than the general fund and other than our standard water fund, if he wishes to.
Jim?
Thank you, Mayor. Matthew, when we discuss 94 and we discuss issues in 98, I think it's always important to keep the public and the council apprised of the whole transaction. One was another one, was another one, it was like a domino effect. We didn't just sell our CAP water right for a lot of money, that isn't what all happened. It also trickled through negotiations between various different governmental agencies, federal, state, municipalities, et cetera, on a constitutionality which was upheld in the Superior Court down in Maricopa County a few years back, maybe 10, 12. 4555E, our constitutionally sanctioned right for another water transaction based on the 94 transaction, a replacement for the 94 transaction, which was established in 98, I believe, may have been around that timeframe, but may have been established in '04, was the court case upon which we were challenged for our right to import water, which was issued under, I believe it was in 4555E, we're the only municipality that's allowed to import water from outside of its management area into its management area for very different reasons. And I think it's really important, especially with new members on council, to keep the whole thing in focus, rather than just, we sold our water right to Colorado River for a lot of money. Well, it wasn't just like that, it was, there was more to it.
No, it's extraordinarily complicated. The 1994 federal act required us to earmark and hold the money for the purchase of alternate water. We went out and found in the big chino, as you recall, as part of that had some legislation in the state created, and here we are today.
Thank you for that little bit of clarification.
Thank you, Mayor. Mayor, I imagine you've said this before, and I just don't remember, the escrowed amount, is there a cutoff date of when we can, like, and if, it's not all claimed, does it come back to the city?
No, it's, it's a one-year escrow amount. If anyone wants to make a claim against the city for that, they can get it. I believe we're probably going to be looking to actually actively get those account holders paid back through the city through some sort of setup with the finance department. If there are any leftover monies, we don't anticipate it'll be very significant, those monies will go to the tribe. The tribe's argument on that was, the reason we came into the money in the first place was because of their status as a reservation.
Sure. Thank you.
Any further counsel comment? Do I have any comments from the public? Do you have a motion?
Mayor, I move to approve the water fee settlement agreement with the Yavapai Prescott Indian Tribe.
Second.
Yeah, I have a motion, a second, please vote.
Passes unanimously.
The next item.
IMC, approval of the city of Prescott's 2016 legislative agenda. Thank you, Mayor and council. Each year before the legislative session starts, we come before you and suggest a fairly broad legislative agenda to sort of set the tone for the session. Before you today, you do have a legislative agenda that, and you can see it here if you need to, covers some broad areas, the first two being some guiding principles that I think are likely to be important every session from here until forever, based on the last 20 to 30 years of legislative activity in Phoenix. Those are to oppose the preemption of local authority, and as you're well aware, we are one of a number of chartered cities in the state of Arizona, and that chartered status provides the city of Prescott a certain amount of local control that isn't provided to cities that specifically take their directive from state statute. That continues to be eroded on, eroded on an annual basis, and I would not be surprised if there isn't some sort of legislation either specific to one area of control that we have right now, or in total about chartered cities this session. We've been sort of seeing a lead up to that over the last few years with legislation that comes forward to preempt the chartered city status of communities. The second is the preservation of local funding. As you're well aware, the city of Prescott is very reliant on state shared revenue for our general fund and also for streets improvements. Our general fund receives almost 35% of its funding from state shared revenue, and those formulas, while somewhat protected due to the requirement of a supermajority to change them, are not entirely protected, as we've seen with the years of sweeps that the state legislature has taken with the highway user revenue fees to fund the Department of Public Safety. So those are two very high arching guiding principles that are often at stake in different types of legislation that come forward, that might be very specific about, you know, how we either hire or don't hire people, or it could be very broad, like last year's attempt to eliminate the residential rental tax from the tax base. And then there are a number, three other more specific legislative objectives, and those are related to topics that we can foresee based on either our own initiatives as a community or things that we're hearing through state publications and our legislators. The first is the reformation of the state pension plan, specifically the public safety personnel retirement system. Obviously, that's been at the forefront here for a number of years, and really rose even further up during this last year with the increase in our unfunded liability. So what it shows here is, you know, oppose increasing costs, support legislation that would create a new tier that's sustainable for both the employee and the employer, and then, if possible, legislation that would improve the existing financial position of the plan. The second item is state regulation of community residences for drug and alcohol rehabilitation and recovery. And obviously, we've been active working on this very gratefully through Representative Campbell for, through the last session, and then now through the summer with the Legislative Ad-Hoc Committee. That current draft of that legislation would enable local, local authority, either city towns or counties, to enact an ordinance for the health and safety measures within a structured sober living home. So that was what came out of that, that process with the Legislative Ad-Hoc Committee, and this would support engaging the legislature and trying to push through actual legislation this session with our partners at the League of Arizona Cities and Towns, and then also through our own efforts. The final, more specific issue would be to constantly be vigilant over the static and decreasing general fund revenue that we receive through that state shared revenue, and also the reductions in the tax base for the local sales tax. I am sorry to say that the same, a similar version of the bill that was dropped last year regarding residential rental was introduced as an intro set today. So I don't think that this will be any new thing this session, we will see some sort of legislation that will attempt to reduce the tax base, the taxable base of options for local sales tax, which is our primary source of revenue in the general fund, as well as the primary source of revenue through the other 1% for the streets fund.
Allison, how much was that defeated by? Was there overwhelmingly vote against that last year?
I wouldn't say it was overwhelming, but there was a very strong effort on the part of all of the cities and towns to--
Oppose it.
Oppose that. However, depending on some of the tweaks that could be in that legislation, sometimes if they put a population cap where it may not directly impact us, that can bifurcate some of that support, but once they get it into law, usually the population cap comes off. So those are the three very high-level issues that I would say would be our, you know, I would recommend those be our top priority. But as you're well aware, every Tuesday that you meet-- But as you're well aware, every Tuesday that you meet throughout the session, starting on January 11th, well, January 12th will be a Tuesday, January 11th is when the legislature goes into session. I do track all of the bills, and now through the assistance of the Aaron's Company, they will also be tracking all of the bills to see if there's something new introduced. If there's a striker bill coming forward, what's the progress? When do we need to reach out to our legislators? Is there a way that we can be impactful through testimony at a committee hearing or by providing talking points? So, for example, today I received that information about the bill for the residential rental tax from Representative Fan directly. So it will be fast and furious, probably beginning the end of January, once some of the bill deadlines start through February and March. And then, of course, the question will be what happens with the state budget. So I say that to say we have, this is a very broad policy statement, and as the actual bills come in through the legislative process and we're able to look at those and monitor, some of the bills may fall into this, and I would think most of them would fall in either a local control issue or one of these other areas to provide some basic direction. And then there's always those Tuesday meetings to come before you and get a little bit more feedback if it's maybe not as black and white of an area.
Counselwoman Blair?
Well, I'd like to thank Representative Fan for being here, and frankly, every time I hear this conversation come up about taxes, I'm offended that we don't have an attorney general that stands up for the sake of a chartered community and allow the proliferation of people at Maricopa County to take away our ability as a community to survive and do what's right for this community under our charter, specifically tax overhaul. Regarding the day when we used to be able to have an impact fee for public safety for libraries, parks, and recreation at the wisdom of the state, they took away that opportunity. And every business in every residential area that moves into the City of Prescott provides an impact to our services. We're allowed to do it for water, we're allowed to do it for sewer, several other things, but they, in their wisdom, believe that they know what's right and what we can charge as far as taxes. Also, when you want to talk about tax overhaul, to take our 2% sales tax that was voted on by the public in Prescott, Arizona, as a chartered community, that gave us and the citizens authorization to take 2%, it's our money, not the state's money, and then to have to send it to the state and then to charge us $170,000 to manage our money, I'm offended by that as well. To continue on with my little speech here, the 501(c)(3)'s that continue to pop up all over this community that have services that have to go to them, like our police department, fire department, they use our roads, but yet we're not able to charge a local sales tax to help with our infrastructure because they're a 501(c)(3) is absolutely bizarre to me as well. So when you want to start talking about residential rentals and how we function with a sales tax in this community for the state to determine they're going to take that away now, at what point in time do we not have a general fund and be able to have funds to support police, fire, recreation, and library? When is somebody down there? Or when is our city attorney, no offense to John, when are we going to sue the state and say we're a chartered city, we have a representative government, but we're allowing the state? The state hates the federal government, it's a step on their toes. But over the years I've sat behind this desk, I've seen nothing but that coming from our own state government, taking away this city's right to make sure our citizens are whole and our community is safe. And anything that comes up down there, I want to know about it because I want to be sitting in the audience. I think it's bizarre that somebody would have the audacity to take away our ability as a chartered community to function.
Counselwoman Wilcox?
Thank you, Mayor. Allison, I'd like a little clarification on the state regulation of community residences for rehabilitation and recovery. Are we pushing for state licensing authority, or are we going to seek authority for chartered cities or local communities to be able to license and regulate rehab and recovery homes?
Sure. Councilwoman Wilcox, our initial thrust during the last session was to request that the state take on the responsibility of that regulation through the Department of Health Services. It has become very clear over the last 18 months that that is unlikely to be successful based on the entirety of the statute relative to the Department of Health Services and their view that realistically what they regulate is specifically medical services or services that are under the direction of a medical director. So they're very finite in how they discuss all of these things throughout the statute and then even further through the many, many pages of rules that they have that define the implementation of that statute. So especially after the Legislative Ad-Hoc Committee that went on the summer and fall, what came out of that committee was a recommendation by a vast majority of those committee members that we take forward legislation that would enable, not require, a city, town, or county to enact a local ordinance that would allow for mandatory registrations and a number of other things related to health and safety with the operation of sober living homes. So right now, what we're unable to do is deal with zoning. So more outside the four walls, you know, where can something be located? What kind of zoning can certain types of activities occur in? But beyond that, once you go inside those four walls, there's not really much authority for a city, a town, or a county relative to the way that these sober living homes operate. So what came out of that dialogue, and I would say out of sort of the reality of being able to get the votes necessary to move something forward, because that is what we're talking about when we talk about legislation and moving that forward, that what we felt we would be able to achieve was a local authority to be able to begin that process.
Well, I think the wording in our agenda as presented doesn't specifically address giving local communities the authority and ability to license and regulate. It focuses on the applicability of ADHS licensure.
And this was written before I actually had some final draft legislation, so we can revise that and talk about local authority. But if it came down to it and there was an openness, I think the preference would be for the state to take this on. I think the reality is that the state is unlikely to be supportive of that, including the Department of Health Services. So that was the initial desire, and so I apologize for leaving that like that, and we can adjust that to be local authority before we send it out.
Okay. Well, you're asking us to approve this as presented, so I'm a little hesitant to do so without having an updated focus on local authority.
We can bring it back. It will be close to the beginning of the session.
I hate to be word crafting at the meeting, but I would be willing to approve this with the, you know, general direction to you that you include an agenda that also includes giving local governments the authority to license and regulate.
Yes, and I would recommend that we adjust that, but also leave some language that talks about still putting, I guess, working with the Department of Health Services within their existing rules to try to, if they're willing to, to address some of the other, you know, types of businesses that they do regulate.
Okay.
And, you know, perhaps if the council is interested in moving forward and authorizing or approving this today, I think something as simple as at the end of the support paragraph, that the additional language would say something to the effect of, or in the alternative, legislation to enable cities to do the same. I think that, because again, this is sort of a broad policy statement, and I think it gets clear direction to staff and to go forward if that's the desire of the council today.
Sounds good.
Counselwoman Chiskin?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Allison, do you really feel like this legislative agenda can make a real difference?
Well, what the legislative agenda does is kind of set the table that we're on the same page generally on how the city council is comfortable moving forward as we enter the legislative session. The reality of how it will work once the legislature is in session is that as the bills come in, I track those, and every Tuesday that we have a council meeting, I provide a pretty ad nauseam list of, you know, bad bills, good bills, where it is, where it is in committee, you know, if there's details on a financial impact to the city, those kinds of things. And where we are effective is if, with one voice, the city is speaking to, especially our local legislators, because they really do listen to us. They're not always able to, you know, timing-wise, I'm not always able to get them on every single bill, but the most important ones, that's where we focus our efforts, and then also that's how we communicate the message. For example, if you're at, you know, a luncheon somewhere and there happens to be a legislator at that same luncheon, especially if it's not one of our own legislators who's probably already aware of our position, it gives the opportunity for our elected officials to be armed with information, to be able to say, "Hey, did you hear about this bill? You know, we have some real concerns about it. I don't know, it looks like you voted for it. What were you thinking?" Or something like that, you know, something in that nature, so that it allows us to kind of all be on the same page and when opportunity arises to speak to an issue with information that will be valuable in that conversation. So the legislative agenda in and of itself isn't going to necessarily move us forward, but it puts us kind of on the same page as to what our highest priorities are, so that when, as it has been the case for the last few years, over 1,000 bills are entered into session, we focus on the ones that are going to have the greatest, you know, impact, negative or positive, to the City of Prescott.
Thank you.
Counselwoman Orr?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Allison, two things. You gave us in the legislative agenda, you talk about 11 million in state shared revenue, and then 4.8 million of that is from income tax. Are you hearing rumblings about that they're hoping to do away with the income tax? What down the road may replace that revenue source?
There are rumblings that there may be a reduction in the rate of the income tax, and so the question is always that the devil is in the details. How much of a reduction? Will there be other offsetting benefits to cities and towns? So those are the kind of strategy items that I work with the league on and all the other cities on, you know, what they're concerned about so we can have power in numbers. But also, you know, if, sometimes we aren't going to win on a yes or a no on legislation, but we might be able to impact the outcome by saying, "We don't like this, but if you are going to enable us to have some other revenue source flexibility, or you're going to include cities and towns in the use tax for revenue sharing," you know, our goals aren't necessarily just to fight something, but it's to try to get an effective outcome, which might mean that in some instances, amendment to legislation would be in our best interest, knowing that the numbers don't support the legislation not moving forward. So it really is a game of strategy, a game of numbers, and a game of trying to sometimes have the least negative impact, but also maybe have an offsetting impact. But yes, there have been rumblings that there may be an impact to income tax. I would point out, though, that the way that that revenue sharing works is it's on a two-year lag, so the revenue that we receive in the next fiscal year is a known number because the state actually collected it two years ago, and then they distribute it on a lag basis for the income tax only.
Well, I'm certainly pleased that we have decided to be proactive with Barry Aaron's, but I'd like for us to see and to some way for this council to be more active, possibly if you see ways that we can go down there, doors that we can knock on, people that we can talk to, and certainly Representative Fan, thank you for being here. But I agree with Councilwoman Blair, we need to speak up as a council and certainly don't want to be out of place, but I think we need to be proactive and be down there as much as we can. So I guess I'm just asking, if you see an opportunity that you think that we can help, I think we need to step up and do it.
Sure, thank you. And I think that's another area where Mr. Aaron's will be very beneficial in actually getting us into a meeting where our voice will be heard versus sitting through a committee hearing where they may not actually accept our testimony.
Waiting and finding out it didn't work when maybe we could have done something by being down there would be really helpful.
Right, thank you.
Any further council discussion? Anything from the public?
Ralph Hess from Prescott. I'm going to build a little bit on what Councilman Blair was saying. That's a topic that's been addressed here many times. The preemption. One thing I would really suggest that you add to the guidelines for preemption is to not just limit your approach to stopping future preemptions, go back to the preemptions that are in existence and have those rescinded. Hearing now about this reduction in income tax, which is going to reduce income tax sharing, there's a preemption that precludes local municipalities like Prescott from assessing an income tax or even submitting it to the voters for consideration. So, one, consider that. Going back and having perhaps staff or the league go back and look at all of the preemptive statutes that are imposing restrictions on municipalities from self-governance and look at having those rescinded. And if the league and the lobbyists are unable to convince legislators to remove those preemptive statutes that really aren't involved with any kind of state interest, but more than likely are there to benefit other lobbyists or special interests to whom the state legislators are beholding. So get rid of those. And with regard to the property tax, don't limit property tax to, or when you're looking to get primary tax modified so that we might be able to use that for public safety issues, why limit it to that? Why not look and see if we can use primary property tax or anything that's really associated with the ownership of property? Those were the two things I wanted to discuss. And then the third one was with the public safety, I haven't really looked at this in detail, but perhaps the league can and you folks can and staff can, is why not, if you're going to be looking to make modifications in the public safety retirement system, why not look to, instead of tiering it, putting everybody into the Arizona State Retirement System? Why do we have different retirement systems for public safety employees and other government or state employees? And why do we have a separate retirement system for elected officials? Each of those has better, different rates that are of greater benefit, and it always looks like the, well, I don't want to say anything else. Anyways, why not put them all into one same retirement system?
Oh, yeah, thanks, Ralph. Representative Fan, would you like to comment, or?
Hello, new council. How's it feel sitting up there? Good? Good. Representative Karen Fan, LD1. Actually, I saw that this was on your agenda, thought it would be important for me to be here and listen to what all is on your minds, be here to ask questions, answer questions for you. Also wanted to make sure you guys know that Allison does an amazing job for you guys. She works very, very hard, and I just wanted to make sure you guys knew that because she's always on top of it, so I just want to make sure you guys know that. I'll start out with any questions you guys may have, anything that... Yes, Steve? Excuse me, Councilwoman Chiskin.
I'm still not used to that.
Me neither.
The question is, why do they feel that they always need to stand up and go, "Hey, I'm a great guy," by reducing the very lifeblood of Arizona, which isn't very much to begin with?
Are you talking about the...
I'm talking about the income tax.
Councilman, there is, it's interesting down there at the state level, the factions that go on, kind of reminds me of that series, Divergent, because there really are some interesting factions down there. You have a, some organizations like the Arizona Tax Research Association, you've got Arizona Free Enterprise, there's a number of various things down there that are totally anti-tax. And so consequently, they are forever, always... And so consequently, they are forever, always going, either trying to get rid of taxes, or trying to reduce taxes. Now, that's not to say that there's probably some taxes out there that probably could be reduced, or gone away with, but a lot of times, nobody looks at the big holistic picture to figure out how we're gonna balance all of this out. Because seriously, if you take the taxes away from here, that is an important part of what your financial infrastructure is here, then they don't look at the counterbalance of what that does to public safety, and, and all the other services that municipalities...
So, you're gonna have to gore somebody else's ox.
That's the way it usually happens, I'm telling you, yeah.
So...
I'm sorry.
I'm sorry.
Go ahead, keep going.
How positive do you feel about being able to squash that kind of situation?
Uh, the income tax?
Mm-hmm.
Personally, I have not even heard of that coming up. I mean, I've heard rumblings about, "Let's do away with this, and let's do away with that," for many years, but if, does it actually get to the floor? Does it actually get assigned to the committees? So far, not. There are some that is out there that would like to do that kind of stuff, but they haven't solved the other problem, is, okay, how do you, how do you maintain the revenues needed to be able to keep that kind of stuff up? And it usually dies. Now, it's not to say that this year won't be successful, but I have not heard of anybody proposing that bill this year yet.
Thank you very much.
There was just a state that is, has no income tax. I forget, was it Texas or Alaska? I can't remember.
Texas, Tennessee, Washington.
And they're actually looking at bringing it back, because they're having a revenue problem.
And, and one of the things that we constantly have to remind people when they say, "Well, so-and-so doesn't have a state income tax." Also, look, you've got Nevada, they have gaming that brings in a lot of money. Texas has oil. Alaska has oil. So, a lot of these states, when you talk about Washington, um, they have huge property taxes up there, and other taxes. I mean, those guys are a pretty liberal state over there. So, the taxes are there, the question is, is what kind of taxes do you wanna pay? And Arizona has always enjoyed low property taxes. So, if we're gonna do away with state income tax, or something else like that, I think it won't be very far behind, and somebody's gonna say, "Okay, they're gonna have to raise property taxes, or sales taxes, or something else to make up that balance."
Representative Fan, I guess, going back to what Steve said, as far as our being a charter city, that we be given more flexibility. I mean, any of us that have been in leadership roles know that you don't put your thumb on the people that you're trying to lead. You, you let them figure out the solutions and, and go to work. And so, anything that you can do to help us with that flexibility, and Allison, same thing, I think that just getting, getting the state off the back. And it's kinda funny, because I didn't really pay attention to this until this past year, and I've really been watching and listening to see what the state is doing to the municipality, especially charter cities, and it's, it's really pretty pathetic.
And Councilman Orr, it, uh, it never ceases to amaze me down there, um, and you guys know me, I'm ex-councilperson myself, I am ex-mayor, um, so obviously, city, towns, and counties are very dear to my heart, and I will always fight for them, with the exception if there's a city that thinks they wanna be a sanctuary city. I can't support that, I'm sorry, guys. Just can't do that one. But outside of those kind of things, um, and it is these folks that are always pounding their fist on the table, you know, "State's rights, state's rights, state's rights, we don't want the federal government." And it's these exact legislators are the ones introducing these bills that are taking away the city's rights. And every time I ask them, "You know what? You guys are doing exactly what you hate, and you, you pound your fence, fist on, but you're doing it to the cities and towns." And I am very sorry to say, but some of these people have actually looked me in the eye and said, "Oh, because the state is all empowering, we should be over all the cities and towns." And that's the way they really think. I've always said, the best legislators down there are people that served on a local level, so they totally understand the big picture here. So, we're fighting them, and I am so glad that the, the charter cities did challenge over the, the new election laws. I, I thought that was wonderful, and that was a good way to stand up and say, "Uh-uh, you're not doing it." So, bravo to all you guys that made a part of that.
Councilwoman Blair?
You know what I said, and I was serious about it? I guess at my point, you know, based upon looking at our budget, and what we have to go through every single year, and what kind of fix we're in right now, what are we gonna do to get the attention of the state legislature, as well as the Attorney General, besides going out with a people's initiative to get it changed? You know, for, for us to sit here and be a representative government, and have somebody tell us that we can't charge an impact fee to our system, that's absolutely being impacted by new growth, for somebody to be that arrogant to tell, tell us how we can function as a charter representative community is beyond me. So, I, the only way I see, and we talk about this constantly, is to get a people's initiative to change this tax law, that's taking away our, our rights to be able to run a quality city. And that's what, that's what the state of Arizona's doing.
And Councilman Blair, um, I, I have to tell you that part of the problem lies, you know, I was serious when I was talking about the municipality that wanted to be a sanctuary city. But part of the other problems are, is we do have, and I don't wanna get into politics per se here, but I, so I'm gonna try and, and word this correctly, we do have some municipalities, large municipalities in the state of Arizona, that are, um, much more liberal than our conservative municipalities, than Prescott is. And consequently, there are these municipalities that are continually wanting to keep adding new taxes, new fees, new this, new that, and everything else, um, for anything and everything, and I've seen it since I've gone down there, and things that City of Prescott would never think of doing. But there are other municipalities that are intent on growing, and I will tell you, it's the Phoenix and Tucson area. And they want to build those bureaucracies, and so they need those monies to be able to do all of their own highway paving, to do all of their own government, to do all of, I mean, literally, their mindset is the government should do everything. And so, I will tell you that I have seen some of these laws that come up, um, these proposed laws, some of them are actually directed against a particular municipality that is trying to do something by growing government. So, there's that always balance about, we have really great municipalities that are just trying to make ends meet, and are just trying to provide the services that the, that our constituents really need, but then there's other cities that wanna go crazy, and that's trying to find that line.
Councilwoman Wilcox?
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you for being here, so we can have this conservation, uh, cons, conversation with you as a council. I wanted to ask you, if you see anything in our agenda that you find strongly partisan one way or the other, Republican versus Democrat?
No, I do not. Everything that you are discussing is, is what is best for the city of Prescott, and pretty much every small municipality here in the state. So, again, Allison's done a really amazing job, and, um, I know she will keep on top of everything, I will keep on top of everything. One thing you may not have heard yet is, um, there is a new legislator down there who told me last week that she wanted to drop a new construction sales tax TPT bill.
Yes.
She wants to do, did you hear that?
Yes.
So, I have, um, I already been around to a, a number of the players, and they have assured me they're gonna go in and talk to her, and strongly suggest, do not even think about doing that this year. We're still hurting from the last one, and trying to fix that mess.
Well, I hope we can see some hands across the aisle on, on city issues. They're important to us.
And we do. Councilwoman Wilcox, you know, despite what we hear on a federal level, you know, on the major polit, we do have some. I mean, I love being on the council, 'cause it's nonpartisan, and you're dealing with local issues, the higher up you get, it does, politics does get into it. But if it's any consolation, I can tell you on a statewide level, that actually, probably 80% really, of what we do down there, really is stuff that is across the aisle. It is what's good for the state of Arizona, and trying to move the state forward, and build our state. There's 20% that really is social issues, um, a difference of opinion of what should be funded, what shouldn't be funded, but, you know, that's really that. Any smart legislator down there will tell you that the other stuff, we do work together on very hard, you just don't hear about it.
Good.
Okay, thank you.
Well, thank you, Representative Fan. If there's no more discussion here, I'd like to get a motion.
Mayor, I'd like to move that we approve the City of Prescott's 2016 legislative agenda with the additional language suggested by the city attorney, under the community residences category.
A second. Did I have a second on it?
Yeah.
Okay. Can I have a motion, a second, please vote?
Actually, could I get you to state that additional language?
Sure. Under the, um, Page 3, State Regulation of Community Residences, the support paragraph would add the following language, or, in the alternative legislation, to enable cities to do the same.
Please vote.
Passed unanimously.
Thank you.
Thank you. Final item?
Item 2D, Discussion of Council Meeting Schedule for 2016. Mayor and Council, the Prescott City Charter requires the city council to meet at least two times each month. Currently, the city council holds three regularly scheduled meetings during each month, month that begin at 3:00 PM. The first Tuesday of the month is the workshop meeting, the second and fourth Tuesdays of the month are the regular voting meetings, and then other special meetings are scheduled on an as-needed basis. So, this item is being presented for your discussion of the meeting schedule for the calendar year 2016.
Okay. I'm gonna let, uh, Councilman Blair start this out, 'cause he made this, uh, mention of this back in November, if you don't mind.
No, no problem.
And, uh, also, I'd like to indicate that, uh, besides talking about the days that we may, uh, wanna have meetings, uh, I've had several people send in, um, emails to me indicating that they would like us to consider possibly moving one council meeting a month, uh, to 5:30 in the evening, so more people could have an opportunity to come in and participate, and listen and learn, uh, about our process. So, Councilman Blair, would you like to start out?
I, yeah, I've always felt that, you know, we owe it to our public to have a study session, where all the questions that are on the agenda are answered by staff, and gone through fairly quickly, and, and we clean things up, where, as the voting session, the following week is usually a short session, where we can also have special meetings if necessary. And in your, your case of having a afternoon, or an evening meeting, there's some sense to be made by having a regular meeting at 3:00 on our study sessions, and then having the voting session, uh, the following Tuesday, as an evening session. It gives an opportunity to cross, you know, both sides of the community, and get people that do have things to say, and I think that's what we're here for, is to represent our public. And I think that we can cover a lot more ground by having a study-voting, study-voting, than to have it so convoluted, where the people out there don't really know whether we're in a voting session, or a study session, or whether it's just the staff giving us information, where they can't have public comment. So, I think the cleaner it is, and neater it is, I'm always geared up to come on a Tuesday, and I think the public, if they know what that schedule is, they're more likely to show up.
Councilwoman Wilcox?
Well, I would very much like to see at least one meeting a month be held in the evening, so more people have an opportunity to attend council meetings. Right now, people who work nine to five in an office, or in a retail store, or any business that closes at 5:00 or 5:30, don't have an opportunity to come down there, if there's an interest that they're, an issue they're really interested in. And I, I think, I'd like to see that opportunity for our whole community.
Is there any further discussion?
The only thing I would have to add is, I have, I agree with Councilman Wilcox, uh, one of those, uh, but, uh, one should probably be a voting meeting. The study sessions tend to, to be very lengthy at times, a lot of questions, and I think it would save on overtime from the staff, so...
So, um, city manager, if we go to, um, two study sessions a month, plus the two voting meetings, is that gonna impact the staff, as far as their ability to get work done?
Well, it, it definitely will. A number of years ago, Councilman Blair certainly will recall the days when we had study session as, and voting, followed by voting session the next week, and that, and that was the My recollection of that time is that, uh, in, in, you know, in, in theory, it made a lot of sense. In practice, what we heard was a repetition, particularly on controversial items. You'd have the, uh, public input at the study session, and then the public input, the very same public input at the voting session, so I think there was some duplication. So, that's one consideration. Another consideration is that, I think, with the, with the goal of, of reducing questions, which, of course, you know, we will never be perfect there, there will always be questions, but, uh, I firmly believe that in recent years, we substantially improved the quality of the documents which become, which come before the city council, and that takes a lot of effort. That's, that's effectively, uh, engaging your department heads and your appointed officials in very critical review of these materials that you see, and, uh, as, as you've seen already, a council agenda packet can be two or three times this. And to basically have that happening every week, um, I, I will tell you that uniformly among city management, that week where we do not have a meeting is definitely a catch-up meeting, um, for a lot of things, a lot of city business that we just can't fit in during the other weeks, because of producing the agenda items, and doing that whole process. So, I think from a productivity standpoint, um, you know, if we go to a weekly meeting, it, it is going to be quite an additional load. That, that's my sense. I would hope that we are producing materials which are of executive quality. This is the city council. Sure, it's a different kind of board of directors, uh, it's not quite as easy as a corporate board of directors in many respects, uh, because the, the charge to the city council, and the way it operates, and that charge, which is delegated and expected, uh, from staff, is much different. It's about providing customers, it's about providing the opportunity for input, it's, it's a lot different. Yes, it's a board of directors, but as we all know, it can get right down into the details, and a lot of detail, too. So, all that requires, uh, a lot of effort, and I think that we are making that effort. I think we're producing the materials, we'd, we'd certainly like to have that, uh, you know, that, that one week of each month typically, to, to be able to get to some other things. With respect to the evening meetings, I think the suggestion's a good one. Um, you know, let's give it a try, see if we reach the audience, uh, at 5:30 or something, that's reasonable. I don't think we would suggest any later than that. Most of us have worked at places, uh, that did try, or were in, either in the habit of night meetings, or did try night meetings, and depending upon where you work, and, and, you know, what the politics of the community are, um, people have, have been places where they're at midnight trying to have reasonable arguments, that will make some sense, that can be reduced to some kind of action, and that's frankly, counterproductive. I think that this council operates very efficiently, and very effectively, and of course, that, that begins with the council members, you council members, who understand what type of meeting this is, it's a business meeting, that the business of the city is extensive, that beyond a certain point, it is about a high-level decision, or, or a business decision, um, and certainly, we don't get bogged down and go on ad nauseam, and I think that that's very important. So, it is a teamwork, it's a teamwork of the staff, with the council, and the community as well. And I think that, uh, certainly, we've seen that, too, because, uh, you know, we, we get quite a bit of input on particular topics, and that's the way the system is set up, and that's healthy. But by and large, uh, we, we don't get 50 speakers for every item on the agenda, and find out that we're still listening to it two days later. So, I think as a matter of teamwork, community, council, and staff, I think we're working very well together. So, we'd like to have that, that off-week, a night meeting is fine, suggest 5:30 or something like that, and let's see what happens, you can always change it.
Okay. Councilwoman Orr?
Well, I've been surprised how few people really come to our meetings, 'cause, thank you for, all of you that are out there, but I think this place should be packed with some of the issues that are before us, and issues... some of the issues that are before us, and issues that are facing us. Public participation, I would like to see that increase. Again, this should be filled, and so if that would be, happen with the 5:30, you know, let's go for it, I think that's a great idea. I also agree with Councilman Blair, I think it's the inconsistency of when we have a meeting, when we don't have a meeting. If we had a meeting every Tuesday, study, vote, study, vote, I think the public would understand that better. However, if that puts the staff at a great disadvantage, but then we are here to do the public's work, so I guess I would support the study, vote, study, vote, and go to an evening once or twice.
Councilwoman Shiski?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I think it really depends on what we're covering that day. I mean, I've seen this place with standing room only, and so, from my standpoint, I have no problem with the week off, and as a matter of fact, it allows us to, from my standpoint, collect my perspective. If we, if we vote the other way, that's fine, but I do think that, that having the week off is valuable. And also, from, from my own business experience, we used to, we've always at Olson's closed at 5:30, forever, and people would come at quarter to 6:00, and we'd have to open the door for them, and we'd go, and finally, we just said, "Well, why don't we open till 6:00 o'clock?" Well, the same people, after we did that, came at 6:15. And so, you know, I'm not sure that trying to wrap our schedule around folks is going to put any more rear ends in the seats, so to speak.
Councilwoman Blair?
Just one more quick suggestion, I guess, to lay out there. I know that it's been done, and I've been part of it. You know, we could do a two-meeting-a-month, where we do the study session at 1:00, and council takes a break at 4:00 and comes back for a 5:30 voting meeting. Therefore, you're meeting twice a month, and you're getting study-voting, study-voting, and you're getting both the nighttime and daytime people in. Then any off Tuesday, we can always convene a special meeting, whether it's a workshop or something like that. I think it's, I think it's my, my thought that I'm here and I can be here, I'm a working man, I like to have the Tuesdays off so I can go out and make more money, but I also know that it's important for the community to understand what we're doing. So if it gives staff the opportunity to build the packets, for me to ask staff questions, and to show up Tuesday at 1:00 for a study session, then take a break for a lunch break or dinner break for the council, and then have a 5:30 voting meeting, where you can get both those folks in, and then have two Tuesdays off a month, it makes some sense to try that as well.
That's a good idea.
Councilwoman Lozelle?
I like that idea, Steve. And I appreciate what staff is, you know, they use that extra week to, to get, get their heads straight and, and bring the right information to us. I know there's, historically, before my time, and Jim and Steve were here, when you put the $10,000 cap, anything under $10,000 was administrative decision. Would it, not that I'm trying to shirk the duty of what we do, would it be, would it be less things on the agenda if we went to like, maybe $15,000 cap on that? To reduce the items on the, to prepare for, for council?
Yeah. Well, I think in most ages, the size, you're, you're going to find probably 25 to 50, you know, frankly. So, you know, we did try it 20, I think, for a while, and I think, I think it worked, but the question is really a matter of policy, how much you want to see, and, you know, where that money, it's, it's all budgeted, but where that money is being spent, it's purely a matter of policy.
Councilwoman Wilcox?
Well, I do like the idea of meeting only two Tuesdays on a month, and if we need a work session, study session on one of those Tuesdays, or both of those Tuesdays, put them back-to-back, or give us a break, but on the same day. And I think it's really within the city manager's discretion and the mayor's discretion when they set the agenda to decide what issues are important enough to have a work session, where the council and the whole, public as a whole needs a next, better explanation of what's being proposed, like a rate increase, or, you know, a major plan amendment, something like that, that folks will need some advanced education on, including us.
Councilwoman Leiberson?
Thank you, Mayor. I kind of agree with what Gene just said, I think there's a level of collaboration between city government and city manager, former government, and you have a mayor and you have a manager. You know, through the council, the mayor sits an agenda, manager's job is to implement it, and the council's been very flexible in the years that I've been on this council. The different faces have changed, but councils have always been somewhat flexible, we meet when we need to meet. I think it's been fairly disruptive to the process the last year or two, not knowing when you're supposed to meet, where you're supposed to meet, how you're supposed to meet, and we can be all over the planet sometimes. I think that the concept of having a meeting in the evening, it's not a bad concept, you can try it, if you have people show up, that's a good thing, but I've also noticed in the time I've been here, when there's an issue that's important in this community, the council chambers are packed. I notice that, you know, we can sit here and talk about a dog park, and you got wall-to-wall people, talk about spending a half a billion dollar, and nobody here. So, you know, whatever the will of the majority of the council is, I think it's been fairly effective, giving staff, you know, one of the things I've always been supportive of is left, less government is best. I mean, the more that you build the bureaucracy, the more opportunity we have to spend the taxpayers' money, and we come up with a reason to figure it out, and I just, I really think that three meetings a month has not been bad. The idea of reserving some of those opportunities, because we have committees and commissions, et cetera, where council meets more frequently through process, whether it be water issues, or whether it be code rewrite, or bicycles, things like this, where people have an opportunity to, to vet things, to get them onto the agenda, has been very effective. So, whatever the will of the majority is, I'm, I'm fine with that. Tuesdays, I've always set aside for a city council, whether we're meeting at 6:00 in the morning or 6:00 in the evening, is not relevant to me, if it's Tuesday, it's Tuesday. When we've needed to meet on Wednesday, we've done it, when we've needed to meet on Thursday, we've done it. And the councils that have been sitting in these chairs over the 12 years or so I've been here, they've all bent their schedules to meet what was necessary to do this job. So, I'll leave it at that. I'm easy.
Councilwoman Shiski?
Mr. Mayor, I really like the idea of having a workshop at 1:00 and then a meeting at 5:30. I think that the only thing about that is, is that I think that the public is, has a misunderstanding about the function of workshops, and the fact that normally, unless at the purview of the mayor, we don't allow public comment during the workshops, and, and I would like to see, if possible, more public comment at the workshops, when people can actually effectively affect our minds and our decisions.
Well, let me just say that we can have public comment at workshops, that's my discretion, and if I think it's going to benefit the overall discussion, I'd be more than happy to do that.
Great.
I think I'd like to go to the public for a few minutes, and see if anybody has any comments.
My name's Daniel Mattson, I've been coming to these meetings very regularly, as I'm sure you all know. I like the idea of sticking to Tuesday, it's easy to remember, and those who, those of us who care to learn about it, find it very easy, I mean, it's been first, second, and fourth Tuesdays, that's very easy to remember. If you guys wanted to change it to first and third, and have the works, work, and then study session, it's worth trying. I've heard a lot of people say they wish we'd be meeting in the evening, so they could make it. It remains to be seen how well that works. If it doesn't work, I would think, okay, city staff is here until 5:00 o'clock normally. If we have a meeting starting at 5:30, and any city staff is needed to be here to answer questions, now you're starting to get into the idea of you're paying city staff to be here after hours. That's one of the arguments, it could happen. That's one of the arguments that's been put forward for having the meetings at 3:00 in the afternoon instead of 5:30 at night. So, I would say that it should be tried on a trial basis, see how it works, see if it brings in more people or not, see if there does turn out to be cases where, well, I wish we would have had this staff member available. I mean, it's worth trying, but let's, let's, if we're going to try it, let's decide a consistent schedule, first and third Tuesday, second and fourth, whatever. I like the Tuesday in between, so that the staff has plenty of time to do their work. And so maybe two Tuesdays a month, and, and, and 1:00, you know, okay, I usually am doing things at 1:00, but I can change my schedule, and, you know, if we want to try that, I think it, it has some merit, and I definitely like the idea of more input at work, work state, work-study meetings, but I'd be a lot more ready to stick to the five minutes and tell people to confine their comments to the topic, because it gets real tiring to have someone who really doesn't understand what these meetings are all about, ramble on about something that has nothing to do with the meeting, or take up 10 minutes when they're really just repeating the same thing over and over again. So as long as you're wanting to stick people to the topic, it would be worth a try.
Okay, before you sit down, Councilman Blair, did you have comments?
No, I just, I guess the comment I like to make is that I think that staff's time's important, and I think Mr. McConnell, knowing that we've cut a lot of folks, you know, it takes us longer to get the job done, so with them having an extra Tuesday off a month, and being able to prepare things, you know, I think there's a savings on both levels, so I think we do a better job with the public doing it that way, and I think that the staff is better prepared without more overtime hours, and I think it's worth that try, the first six months, to see if we make an effective change, if it works.
City Manager, you want to talk about exempted employees for a moment, because I think that's what we try and make sure we had here, right, for most of our?
Well, Mayor and Council, that's right. Most of the employees who appear before you for agenda items are exempt employees, that is, they do not receive overtime, nor are we eligible for overtime. There are some exceptions with respect to the employees who appear before you, but generally speaking, that should not be a big issue.
Councilwoman Moore?
So Craig, can't we give flex time, too? I mean, do you do that, like, if somebody's here for four hours in the afternoon, then can't they take off four hours the next day?
I can address that, the, if it's, if it's a non-exempt or hourly employee, the FLSA, Fair Labor Standards Act, doesn't allow the employer to require someone to take comp time, now this is up to the employee to choose either overtime or comp time, but for salaried employees, exempt employees, it's just, it is what it is. I mean, if it's a 10-hour day, or a 15-hour day, that, you know, the pay doesn't get any, doesn't change.
Or a five-hour day.
Or a five-hour day.
Yeah, okay, you know, you can look at it both ways.
I was going to go there, but I wisely decided not to, thank you.
Mayor Protem, I think that's the exception, the five-hour day.
I would like to add that I think these packets are really excellent, they're really excellent, the background information is, is very thorough, and I, for one, not having all the background information, really appreciate the work that staff does, it's exceptional.
I'd like to make a motion, Mayor, if we're there.
I'd just like to make sure we don't have any further public comment.
It's Ralph Hess, Prescott. It's already been said, but I want to advocate, and reiterate, but those who have called for public input at all the meetings, regardless of how many meetings you decide to have, public input at all of the meetings. So that if you choose to consider what the public says, you have the opportunity to do so before you vote.
Okay. I just got a question for the city manager, do you, do you think you can work with the two Tuesdays a month, where you'd have a work, study session first, and then move into the voting meeting?
Well, we're certainly on board to give it a try. If I could mention one thing about public input, I think that the criterion is that if there's new information, which is fairly weighty information, being presented for the first time, a 78-slide PowerPoint, sometimes, sometimes it's better for all of us to digest that, and then have public, you know, comment at another meeting. I think that that just takes judgment, just takes judgment on the part of, of the city council. But generally speaking, these meetings are public, and they're intended to have public comment. I think that there are some exceptions to that, again, for some particular types of presentations.
Mayor, I just have one comment. Are we going to be violating anything in the charter by a time between the voting and the, the workshop and the voting? Is it 24 hours, anything like that, or can go right into the voting?
No, in fact, that was sort of a question for clarity, if you have the workshop/study session at, say, 1:00, are you talking about going into the, that same day, doing the voting meeting, or having it staggered, so it's two weeks later?
Same day.
Okay. No, it would just have to be noticed that way, the agendas have to be posted, work-study session, and then voting meeting, and also, that work-study session, oftentimes, as you know, we have workshops or work sessions where there is no contemplated vote any time in the near future, so that work/study would include both items that would be decided on later on that night, as well as items that have no sort of scheduled vote, so we would just have to make sure, I think we can work that with the clerk, to make sure it's noticed properly.
I think those special meetings, from my standpoint, like if we want to have a workshop, they were talking about an airport that's important to everybody here, that we call a special meeting on the second Tuesday of the month, have a two-hour presentation with no public comment, and then we put it on a later agenda if there's a vote.
And as you recall, last year, or in prior years, that's the way the budget tends to work, there are those special morning meetings for two- and three- and four-hour budget discussions that are sort of separate and apart from the work, the normal workshops or work sessions and voting sessions.
Before we go to a motion, I think I'd like to make sure that, is, are we looking at trying to go to both voting sessions, starting at 5:30, or only one of them?
Both. I think for consistency, just to try it out for the first six months, is to do both, the first and the third, a 1:00 study and a 5:30 voting, and then any special meetings can be convened on the third or the, you know, or, excuse me, on the second or fourth.
Or like executive, if something comes up legally or something like that.
Whatever the case may be, I just think that as long as we set that, and it's a new process, that people will understand it.
Okay. Any further discussion on this, before we, I ask for a motion.
I would just want to make sure that we know the effective date, if that's the first, beginning the first week in January, you know, we may have, well, we'll have to make some adjustments to the January schedule.
I just had a clarification, I'd like to leave it in the discretion of the city manager and the mayor, as to whether or not the same subject occurs in a work session immediately followed by a voting session. It may be more appropriate at times to have a work session on a subject, and then wait till the next meeting to do, to vote on that, so we can think about it.
And we can get public input.
And especially if it's got to go back to staff for further research or something like that.
So I think, if I'm hearing right, I mean, I can sort of craft the motion, or the movement is to have city, you know, scheduled city council meetings, the first and third Tuesday of each month, the 1:00 meeting will be a work and study session, the 5:30 meeting will be a business or voting session, and that's, and then that's the first and third, and obviously, special meetings can be called on the regular notice as needed.
Second.
Making a motion, I was just giving you some.
I'd like to make a motion to that effect.
I will second it to that effect.
Well, that means we're going to have some 10:00, 11:00 meetings, I'm sure, when it's all over, but, do you have a motion?
I did make that motion.
And Steve's second.
Second.
Okay.
So, move to the council meetings, the first and third meeting of the month, the first and third Tuesdays of the month, 1:00 study session, followed by a 5:30 regular. first and third Tuesdays of the month, 1:00 study session, followed by a 5:30 regular meeting.
And effective 1st of February.
Effective 1st of January.
We'll start February.
Yeah. We have an executive session, for example, with limited availability for January, so I think that beginning the first week in February...
We've already planned January out, so we don't want you guys to miss out.
If that's okay with the council.
Okay. And we'll do this for a six-month draw period.
Okay.
Okay. We have a motion in a second. Please vote.
Passed unanimously.
Okay, I'm about ready to wrap up this meeting, and let me just go ahead and say that, you know, we have a lot of folks that, in our history, that have provided a lot of intelligent comments to, for us to ponder. And one I'll talk about today is from George Washington, and, you know, I think it's very important that we have transparency. I like the idea of the open meeting laws, even though sometimes they can be somewhat difficult and time-consuming. But, you know, it's very important for us to give information to the public and to hear the public's comments. And so, I'd just like to close with George Washington's comment. Knowledge is, in every country, the surest basis of public happiness. And that was his first inaugural message, January 8, 1790. This meeting's adjourned. Thank you.